Monday, October 15, 2012. We do apologize we're a little late. We were downstairs in the executive session. At this time, I would ask everyone in the audience to please stand for the prayer first, and followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, October serves as a reminder of two important issues. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Many of us know of a person or family dealing with cancer, and many of us know of someone who has had to live in an environment where abuse is felt. So our prayer is: For a world where breast cancer, as well as all cancers, are eradicated from our vocabulary; and for a world where no person has to live in a home with the fear of being abused. May you heal all those whose bodies have been inflicted with cancer, and may you protect anyone who is a victim of abuse. Last, we thank you for the privilege to serve the town of Enfield. May you give us wisdom and understanding as we make decisions for the betterment of everyone who lives in our town. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And may we have roll call, please.
Mayor Copen.
Here.
Councilman Kinsler.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
Councilman Mangini.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Stokes.
Here.
Councilman Arnoney.
Here.
Councilman Bosco.
Here.
Councilman Crowley.
Here.
Councilman Edgar.
Here.
Councilman Hall. We have 10 members present, what is absent?
Next item on the agenda is our fire evacuation announcement. Remind our audience that in the event of the fire alarm sounding here at Town Hall, I remind everyone that they must evacuate the building. Closest exits would be to the rear of council chambers and out to the front of Town Hall. But if you choose to go out the side door, to your right or left, we ask that you take the back set of stairs to the back parking lot of Town Hall. Next, the minutes of the preceding meetings. Deputy Mayor Nelson. Minutes of the preceding meetings, first is the special meeting of October 1, 2012. So move.
Second.
Moved by Deputy—
That was Councilman Bosco.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion on the minutes? Sensing none, by show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions? Unanimous. And then the minutes of the regular meeting of October 1, 2012. Second by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Any discussion on these minutes? Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, any abstentions? Our special guest section, we have two special guests. First, I'd like to call representatives forward from the Enfield Rotary Club for the presentation of a proclamation. And if council would like to come out front, or would you like me just to go? What do you want to do?
You can. We'll stay here. But I'll take my two fellow Rotarian council members, Councilman Mangini and Stokes, if they want to come. It's part of the call. Kind of more like, we're going to—
Good evening, gentlemen. Welcome. Good to see you, Mr. President. Come on up.
How you doing? What are you doing?
So what we have for you this evening is a proclamation, and then I will turn the microphone over, and you can tell us about the Rotary Club of Enfield and any efforts on polio eradication. Because we actually, on that—on the prayer, we talked about the potential eradication of cancer, and there's great news on the polio front, and Rotary has been instrumental in eradicating polio throughout the world. So we do have a proclamation designating October 22 to the 28, 2012, as End Polio Now Week, and October 24, 2012, as World Polio Day. Whereas polio is a crippling and potentially fatal disease that still threatens all children if it is not finally eradicated in parts of Africa, Asia, and the Middle East. And whereas it is critical that individuals be vaccinated against polio in order to avoid infection by the polio virus. And whereas the incidence of polio has dramatically declined throughout most of the world due to various education and immunization programs worldwide. And whereas Rotary International and individual Rotarians have contributed over $1 billion and spearheaded collaborations with donor governments such as the World Health Organization, UNICEF, and the Centers for Disease Control, leading to a significant reduction in the incidence of polo world—polio. Polo. Polio worldwide by over 99%. And whereas Rotarians from the town of Enfield have generously joined in these efforts through monetary contributions and participation in overseas immunization initiatives since the campaign to eradicate polio was launched in 1985. And whereas the town of Enfield Rotarians, along with fellow Rotarians worldwide, have joined together to match two challenge grants of $200 million from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and these Rotarians are sponsoring local activities during the week of October 22 through 28, 2012, to educate the general public about the need to eradicate polio and to raise funds for its eradication. Now therefore, I, Scott Copen, Mayor of the town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council, the Town Administration, and the entire community, to hereby proclaim October 22 through the 28, 2012, as End Polio Now Week, and October 24, 2012, as World Polio Day, calling upon the people of the town of Enfield to join the Rotarians and their fellow citizens in taking part in this special observance. Signed today, October 15, 2012, to President Ed. Congratulations and thanks for all the great work that Rotary does here in Enfield.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very proud to be here today as President of the Enfield Rotary Club. As you heard Scott say, 27 years ago Rotary International started this effort to eradicate polio worldwide, and I believe we're down to only three countries throughout the world that have instances of polio. So it's a major undertaking, and as you also heard, that nearly $1 billion has been raised towards this effort. And I know based—my father being a victim of polio many years ago, it's a very crippling disease, and an efforts worldwide to have this eradicated has been very special to the Rotary Club, and I thank everybody who have efforts that have gone on throughout the world, and the Enfield Clubs, and all the clubs throughout our district. These proclamations will also be at our foundation dinner on November 1, District Foundation Dinner, November 1, in Agawam at the Chez Joseph. So it'll be on display there. They're asking all mayors and selectmen throughout the district to have proclamations for World Polio Day and Polio Week. And I'm very happy and proud to be here today on behalf of the Rotary Club. I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Bill? Bill Squires, who is a very longtime Rotarian from the town of Enfield. Thank you very much. I appreciate being here today.
Great, thank you.
Mr. President. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Our next special guests are our registrars of voters, and we have the Democrat Registrar Voters Carol Senske and Republican Registrar Voters David Wauer coming forward for an update on the 2012 election coming up on Tuesday, November 6. Welcome.
Afternoon. Good evening.
We're glad to be back.
Starting to feel like one of the councils. Everything's running very smoothly. The cards are ready to be printed up, the cards that will tell people where to go to vote. We're—
It's on.
It is.
Get a little—get a li— You work so close together. Just move a little.
We're basically ready to go, and if anybody has any questions, we'll answer them. We want to remind people that the absentee ballot opportunity is still available for anybody who has difficulty getting into the polls. You pick up a registration form from the town clerk's office, and you can have it mailed to you. You can pick it up. You can have somebody else bring it home to you. If you pick it up, you can fill it out right there and leave it, and your vote will be cast.
We just want to remind people that they'll be voting at either Enfield High, Henry Barnard Elementary, John F. Kennedy Middle, or Fermi High. Hours of voting are 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I think we're up to about 25,000 registered voters. We crossed that barrier the past week or so. We're getting about 50 a day registrations.
Wow.
Comparison, in 2008, we had like 27,600 registered voters. We dropped—you always drop in the four years, but we're picking up. Registrations are something like this: 11,000 unaffiliateds, 8,900 Democrats, and 4,900 Republicans. So that's kind of where we are today. And we've hired our workforce, for the most part. We're going to have a training session a week from tonight, a week from tonight at the Enfield Senior Center, and we're ready to go.
We'll be open on Saturday, from 10 to 2. If anybody hasn't registered and wants to, and can't get here during the week, the office will be open, 10 a.m. till 2 p.m.
And Tuesday, October 30, will be open from 9 a.m. to 8 p.m. That is the last day anyone can register in person. And the week prior, October 23, a Tuesday, is the last day anyone can send in a mail-in registration card. Postmarked. So those are the deadlines coming up, but we're seeing, again, 40 or 50 new voter applications every day.
So if you could go over the—again, the Saturday, the 20th, just give a plug for that again.
Okay. Saturday, October 20, from 10 a.m. till 2 p.m., the office will be open to take registrations to vote, and—
Lower level—lower level Town Hall, enter through the rear—
Sliding doors, right.
Sliding doors in the back.
Right.
Okay.
And on the 30th, we stay open until—
Till 8.
8 p.m. So we're getting anybody who can't get there during the week, and then we're doing the evening on the 30th, so we'll be open till 8 p.m. And anybody who wants to register, that'll be their last shot.
We also want to thank the town clerk and her staff, because they've done yeoman's work on voter registration as well. I mean, people are just pouring into town, so—are pouring into registered vote. And her—and the town clerk's staff has been very supportive and gracious and done a lot of good things.
As they always are.
Great.
We—I have one other thing I wanted to—oh. Some people may not know this, but anybody can vote for the President of the United States, whether they're registered or not, on Election Day, in this particular room right here, from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m. So, you know, that's the only office that you can vote for without being a registered voter.
But you must be a proof of residence in the town of Enfield.
So in that case, you have to bring your proof of residency to Town Hall. If you're not a registered voter and you've passed all the deadlines, you can come and vote for the Office of President alone by showing your proof of residency. If they're a registered voter, they need to go to their polling place.
Right.
So this would be for anyone that's not registered. Okay.
Mr. Crowley, just on that issue, is there any other stipulations, like you have to prove citizenship or anything else, that you're a citizen of the United States, or just a resident of the United States? I just wanted—because what you stated was you just bring your—
CLP bill.
Right.
Well, we ask you if you are a citizen.
Okay, all right. You have to bring proof of it, obviously, correct?
What proof do you have that you're a citizen?
Well, I don't know.
Your certificate? No, we don't—we don't—we don't ask—
On regular voter registration, I cannot speak—town clerk handles the paperwork on presidential, but on regular registration forms, you must—you check the box stating you're a U.S. citizen. When you sign it, it's under penalty of perjury. It's a felony if you're in fact found out to be not a citizen.
So that's all you need is proof of residency, is what you're saying? Okay.
Councilman Arnoney.
The overall election, we have to show an ID. Can you tell everybody exactly what IDs in the state of Connecticut are allowed? It's not just a driver's license, from what I know. So could you please enlighten everybody? If you don't have a driver's license, you can vote.
Yeah. Your driver's license. Also, any piece of mail that comes to you, utility bill, that is addressed to you at your address here in town, you can bring that in. And they do have—
Well, you know, I mean, it gets a little more complicated in a federal year. A federal year is different from a municipal year. You have two different classes of voters. You have a have-a voter, Help America Voting Act voter, and you have a veteran voter. So Carol was describing a veteran voter's requirements. Now, a veteran voter is also—if you have a—if you—that means you voted in previous elections. If you have a work ID, Brooks Brothers ID, photo, that is proof—that is a proof—it's a valid ID at your place of employment, a veteran voter can use that as well. Social Security card. Again, veteran voters, those are people already on the list. First-time voter must show a name with an address for this election, for the first time they vote.
The same with a veteran voter, too. You can show that address and name also.
You can.
So all of the above for a veteran voter, a little more specific for a new voter.
Correct.
Thank you.
Further questions from the council? Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you for both coming back again. The only question I have with the postcards that you're sending out, they will be detailing the specific polling places for the resident that receives them?
Yes, there's four different postcards going out to the district that the people live in. And they're going to be on bright paper in black ink, no red, white, and blue, because I'm thinking that the reason some people felt like they didn't get them was they thought it was regular campaign literature, and it didn't get read. It might not have gotten read.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Lee.
Those postcards, are they being mailed first class?
Yes. With a permit.
But not—
It's first-class permit.
Political bulk mail where they're going to get—
No, no, they—no.
Okay.
Not political at all.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, comments? My only question is on the postcards itself. So every household with a registered voter will receive a postcard. So in David's case, his house would get one postcard to the Wauer household. So everyone should get one. It's bright pink, black lettering. And are they to—when should voters expect them to be received at their homes?
Well, they're going out on the 22nd.
So they'll be mailed on the 22nd, which is—
On next—
Is a Monday.
Monday.
So next Monday.
So they should have by Wednesday at the latest.
Okay.
If I may add, there's one other feature on the town website that we would like to refer people to if they have any questions. It's—I was looking at it earlier today. It's on the front part of—the front of the town website, lower-left corner, under Features or Highlights, you'll see a link to Where Do I Vote? And it is linked—you enter your street address, you enter your street, and then it'll ask you to put the street address in the next box, and then up will pop up the name of your councilman and where you vote. And that was updated by the town's IT department first week of October. Did not mention October 1 because we're still beta-testing it to ensure that we had all 400-plus streets linked to the proper voting site.
Great. Any further questions? Then thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work that you do to bring fair, clean elections to Enfield. And please remember, if you could do us the favor and get out there and get some statistics on the actual walking distance from an average parking space in through the process, and also your handicap accommodations either on the circles or close up to the building, so that we can have some stats to then talk about, and the other issues that you raised on October 1.
And I have to apologize, actually, David provided me a pacing for each of the different sites, and I should have forwarded that, and I apologize for not forwarding that. But I also wanted to look from a distance standpoint, because paces, he may be a little bit different in terms of what his pace was versus others. So we're going to go out there and supplement what he's done with actually a measuring weld, too, to get those distances, so.
Great.
But I will forward what he forwarded to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Next item on the agenda is Public Communications and Petitions. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, I ask that you raise your hand. I'll call on you. Lynn Skoll, you'll be first. Come up to the front tables. Please state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to no more than five minutes. I will time you, and I will tell you politely at 4:50 seconds, our 30 seconds that you have to wrap up. And we ask that you please refuse—refrain from the use of personalities. Don't refuse anything, just refrain.
I don't refuse anything, okay.
Hello, Lynn.
Hello, Lynn Skoll, Six Pine Crest Road. Thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. I am here tonight to speak to you on two issues. The first one is my lovely orange T-shirt, and I understand what Carol means about the bright paper, because orange works well with kids, just like pink works with adults. I am representing First Readers, and First Readers is a committee of individuals who are members of the community in Enfield, whether they be town residents, whether they work here, they are involved in some way in our community. And our sole purpose is to celebrate emerging readers. We celebrate kindergarten, first and second grade children who reside in the town of Enfield, who would be in those three grade levels, and when those children are certified as having read their first book, we celebrate them. Our next celebration is going to be on November 1 at Enrico Fermi High School at 6 p.m. You all have an invitation in front of you, because I attempted to email it for inclusion electronically, but it was refused because it was a big file. So, you got paper. And you didn't get orange paper, because we haven't got it yet.
Yeah.
But we are asking that you join us. There is nothing quite like coming to one of our ceremonies. I know Cindy has been to ours, and I think a few of you have been to one or two of them, and seeing all of the little five, six, seven, sometimes eight-year-old children who have just learned to read, and the excitement that they get when someone celebrates that they know how to read. It's their first large milestone in education, and it's the foundation for graduation from eighth grade, high school, college, trade school, whatever they go on to. If they don't learn to read, they don't get to do those other things. So we celebrate their first steps into reading. And we're making sure that all of the—excuse me—elected officials here in town know about that in plenty of time, so you can put it on your calendar. So again, November 1, 6 p.m., Enrico Fermi High School. You're all invited. I can't guarantee all of you will get an orange T-shirt, but if you—well, that's true, Greg has one. So you can wear your T-shirt, Greg. Okay. So I hope to see you there, and if anybody has any questions, they can certainly contact me, but they can also go to our website, www-firstreaders.org, and most of the questions will be answered there. So now I'm going to turn my hat around, my figurative hat, and say thank you to all of you council members who have been placing factual information on the high school referendum out into the public. For a person who is not only a supporter, but a silent member of the Enfields Future PAC, I am most appreciative that you have made sure that every voter is reasonably well-informed, or has the opportunity to be well-informed, prior to a vote. And I wanted to let you know how much I appreciate that. As a former official of the town myself, I know how important it is. So thank you all, and thank you for letting me speak this evening.
Great, thanks, Lynn. Public Communications, Mr. Christmas.
Donald Christmas, 25 Lincoln Street, Enfield, Connecticut. Excuse me. Today I had the wonderful privilege of listening to both my sons. Schoolteachers call me on their progress reports and tell me how wonderful they're doing in school and how far they're excelling in school, and what a pleasure they were in school and how great they're doing. I live in Enfield, and unfortunately, my son has to go to—my oldest son goes to East Hartford School, and my youngest son goes to Weathersfield. With that being said, I'm going to start from the beginning here. My sons were returned to me after my marriage, and I was able to get them home. I was—I put them in Enfield School Systems. My son went to Parkman School for his first year back at home, and the DCF was called 43 times out of 180 a day. And countless days, I was called to pick my son up, because I had this horrible kid that no one could take care of. When he got home, he was like the most greatest little angel. But at home, I had to scold him, put him away, put him—and ground him as a first grader, because I thought that what I was doing at the time was great. My eldest son went to—started school here in Enfield, and he was in kindergarten, and DCF was called on him almost 23 times, and the Enfield Police Department was called almost like 45 times. And I was called and told him—I was called countless of times to take him home. Matter of fact, he was thrown out of the—after school sessions, and after what I paid for him that was supposed to help him out, he was thrown out of there without any kind of refund. The second year, my son went to Stowe School, and now DCF was called almost 53 times. He was put into a room that was a rubber room almost, and it was all full of pads. His clothes was taken off him. He was allowed to urinate and defecate all over himself, and I was called for last resort to come get him out, because they said they couldn't deal with him. Every time I called—every time I was called to pick him up, I thought I was doing my father the duties of scolding him, putting him in his room, telling him what bad a child he was, because I was accepting that the Enfield teachers knew better than I did. Well, I was—I, after fighting with Mr. Gallagher and after fighting with the school systems, I finally got my son out of Enfield School and brought him to East—into East Hartford, which is absolutely unbelievable. And since he's been in East Hartford, I've had zero phone calls from DCF, no police calls, and I have yet to pick him up even once. What's really scary is that the East Hartford Schools that took my son in only makes half the salary of the Enfield Police School System. My son was unfortunately stuck—my youngest son was unfortunately stuck in the Enfield School Systems, and I had to fight the second year to get him out of the Enfield School Systems, and I had to bring him to Weathersfield. It's just amazing to me that we're putting all this money into our school systems, and everyone's getting this illusion that we're getting a better school system. If you remember the story of Jesus, he told the people, if you tear the church down, in three days, I'll rebuild it. And they all laughed at him, saying that takes years to build a church. And he goes, "No," he says, "I don't need beautiful buildings to teach my children." What I'm trying to tell you is I hear a lot about these new schools coming back up. My two sons have to get up an hour earlier than any other child in town, get on a bus and travel, and have to come home. And I yelled at them for two and a half years, and I feel like the biggest heel, because I thought my sons were the problem. I'm tired of hearing how great this Enfield School System is, and it's absolutely horrible, and I was thrown underneath the— And I was thrown underneath the rug. No one wanted to do anything for my child. And it's funny because I talked to other people that live in Thompsonville, and all the kids have special needs, and they have the same problems. It's always a constant fight for special need kids to get help in their schools. And they're treated like monsters, and it's easier for them to call DCF and kick the can down the road with somebody else and let you lose your job and let you have to go fight and fight and fight. And it's, I just think it's horrible that we're spending all this money on a school system for this big front. It's a beautiful building. But what's happening on the inside, to me, has been a failure to my kids. I just think that there should be something done. I think my kids should come back to Enfield. I think there should be teachers that, other than in East Hartford and Weathersfield, that can teach my kids here, and they can grow up with their own peers. My kids don't even know the kids in Thompsonville or any other neighborhoods because they go to school in other parts of town. And because of the schools they're going to, they won't release any names so they, so they can go play with the kids from after school with them. They kind of live, living isolated. And I know when I grew up in Enfield, it was one of the best things in the world to come home from school and play with my neighbors and play with my neighbors.
30 seconds, Donnie.
Okay, I'm all set. Thank you very much. But I just want to let you know that was my piece.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Public Communications, Donna. Pat, you're next. Always have to do ladies before gentlemen.
That's right.
Back and forth. And she has a brick.
Donna Suzak, 35 South Road. Actually, the reason I've come tonight is I understand you're in the process of getting ready to raise the A.D. Higgins. And I come to show you my brick. My brick is from Pfaffner Bearings. When Pfaffner was torn down, they did salvage the bricks. They put a nice little plaque on them, and the people who worked there most of their lives and felt that their livelihood came from this building purchased bricks for their family members. I've talked to a few people. My mother, for one, went to the A.D. Higgins all her school career, as, I guess, through the eighth grade, and she said, gee, I'd buy a brick if they sold a brick. So, it's just a little something that people have done in other communities. It kind of allows people to keep that tie to the building that they like. And I was requested that I would ask another question. Any of the, I guess, masonry that's in there that actually has the name of the A.D. Higgins or any other things, would they be preserved during the raising of the building?
Yes, and we'll, one of us can answer that during councilman communication.
Okay. Well, because I'm going, after this, I'm going to leave. This is my one evening out. But I did want to, I did email Scott, and I wanted to, and he said, sure, come by and show me your brick. So, it is possible to do. I don't think you probably would make any money at it, but you might have a lot of good community feelings from it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And yes, I did ask Donna to come and bring her brick and pitch the idea so everyone can hear it.
But don't pitch the brick.
Yeah, don't pitch it.
Thank you. I don't have a brick. My name is Pat Drooney, 15 Babalink Lane, Enfield. I'm also the treasurer of Enfields Future PAC, which is a bipartisan group of concerned citizens, taxpayers and parents who are advocating for the referendum question coming up next month. First of all, I'd like to thank the town council for giving me the opportunity to serve on the pre-referendum high school consolidation committee. Learned a lot by being on that committee and really kind of paved the way for where I am today. I believe the preliminary plans that have been developed for a consolidated high school are an excellent start toward giving our children a 21st century facility in which they can excel in a high school in which the community can take great pride in. November 6th, Enfield residents have an outstanding opportunity to secure the future of our town. Question one is an important referendum question on the ballot. Question that will be answered in one of two ways. Yes, we want the best possible education for our children. We want to move the town forward, and we want to invest in our children and grandchildren. We want to take advantage of a tremendous opportunity to renovate the Enfield High Building as new with a very, very small investment locally. Or we can say no. No to improved education, no to our children's future, and no to making the town of Enfield a go-to destination for families with school-aged children and also newlyweds who plan on raising a family someday. We have an outstanding opportunity right now at our fingertips if we choose to grasp it. We can give the community a state-of-the-art 21st century high school that will serve our kids for many years to come. Enfield has positioned itself well financially, and because of this, the state of Connecticut is willing to reimburse about 72% for renovating its new high school. That will fit the new steam requirements and the revised state of Connecticut high school curriculum. Whether or not Enfield chooses to be the recipient of those funds, that money will go to someone. And to quote one of my favorites, Curt Schilling in 2004, "Why not us?" I've had people come up to me and tell me that they're paying for this one way or the other, and that's true. One argument I've personally put forth is that if the federal government, state government, or local government pays for it, it's still coming out of your pocket, albeit a different one. And that's true. But if Enfield doesn't avail itself of this opportunity, another town will. And whether it's Greenwich or Torrington, South Windsor, Groton, doesn't matter. Somebody's going to take advantage of this money. Why not us? This referendum of pass will provide our children with an outstanding environment in which to learn. State-of-the-art facilities will be available in science, technology, engineering, and math. Our award-winning instrumental music students will have a tremendous facility in which to practice and learn. Our drama club will have an amazing facility in which to entertain the community. Our athletic teams will have a beautiful gym in which to play that they can be proud of. And the community as a whole will have an icon which we can all be proud of. That is what the new high school can bring to Enfield. Why not us? Enfield High and Fermi High are both in dire needs of upgrades. Merely taking care of upgrades in the area of ADA and NIASC requirements will cost nearly $50 million by all estimates, if not more. This doesn't take into account the new steam requirements in the state curriculum, which could nearly double that estimate. Staffing the two high schools is extremely expensive. Estimates provided have shown that by closing one of the two existing buildings, enough savings might be realized to offset any expenses above and beyond the state reimbursement. And that is not hyperbole. That is pretty much essence and stone. That would not be the case if we did not renovate as new. Those costs would be borne entirely by the taxpayers of the town of Enfield. Some may wonder why I'm involved with this. My ship has basically sailed. I've had four children go through the Enfield Public Schools successfully, I might add. My granddaughter is a sophomore at Fermi High School. I have nieces and nephews that won't benefit from this project likely before it's, once it's completed. Maybe the only one is my grandson, who's currently in elementary school. But I believe providing all the kids in Enfield with an outstanding education and the ability to benefit from this is something that we owe them. We want a place where they can excel. Right now, many of our kids are doing that in spite of us, not because of us. Why don't we take that next important step and give them what they need to succeed? Give the Board of Ed the ability to offer more AP classes, more classes in ways of science, math, engineering, and arts. Why not us? On November 6th, I'm urging all the residents of Enfield to vote yes on question one. This is not a Taj Mahal-type of project. The proposed design is thoughtful, efficient, and more importantly, will provide the facilities our children need to succeed in an ever-competitive global economy. We have an opportunity to tell our children and grandchildren that, yes, they are important. We value them, want to provide them with a high school which they can aspire to be whatever they want. Don't let rumors, innuendo, and misleading information on Facebook work against this project. The name of the school, the future use of Fermi, and other matters should not come into this, not if we are able to take advantage of this golden opportunity that presents itself before us right now. If anybody has any further questions out in the community and wants to get more information, you go to enfieldsfuture.com, and we can answer any of your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Public Communications, Gina. Nice t-shirt.
Thank you. Gina Sullivan, 11 Spear Avenue. I'm here also tonight representing Enfields Future PAC, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the high school consolidation referendum. I'm really hoping that there are many people watching at home tonight, as this is probably one of the most important votes we're going to cast in our town for a long time to come. We need to spread the word. So, I ask that each of you watching tonight, share some of this information you've heard with as many folks as you can. There's been a lot of discussion about this referendum, and I wanted to bring up some very important points. If we vote yes for the referendum, Enfield will have a state-of-the-art high school, which will not only benefit our children, but the town as a whole. The state will fund nearly 72% of this project. In my mind, it does not get much better than that. If we vote no, then another town in Connecticut gets this money. Why would we, as citizens of Enfield, want to let this money slip away? It worries me, though, that some citizens are under the impression that if they do not have children in the Enfield Public Schools, that this referendum has no effect on them. This is incorrect info, and we need to spread the word now because our time is running out. This vote affects every tax-paying citizen in town. If the referendum does not pass, we stand to not only lose the state money, but will spend close to $51 million to update two high schools, which both have declining enrollment, and none of it will be reimbursed by the state. This fact concerns me as a taxpayer because my family is not in a position to have our taxes raised. Can those on fixed incomes afford a tax increase at a time when everything else is going up except our incomes? And my concern is not only as a parent with children in Enfield Public School, but as a concerned daughter for my 84-year-old mom, a homeowner and a taxpayer in Enfield. She is on a very fixed income now and cannot afford to have her taxes increased. And I'm sure that there are many senior citizens in Enfield just like her in a similar situation. This is why the citizens of Enfield need to know how important this yes vote is for our town, as its outcome will not only affect our children, but all citizens of Enfield. For more information on the referendum, please visit enfieldsfuture.com. And please do the right thing on November 6th for Enfield and vote yes on question one. Thank you.
Turned off my microphone. Thank you, Gina.
Read the back.
Hello. Is this on?
Yes, it's on.
John Fox, 15 Sandpiper Road, wearing two hats tonight. First hat I'm wearing is for the Enfields Future PAC, which I've had the pleasure to work with. As Pat had mentioned, it's a nice bipartisan effort to address the referendum. And I think this is the greatest lesson I've ever learned, you know, what's achievable in Enfield when Republicans and Democrats work together, and especially for a great cause like this. I'm confident it will pass just for that reason. To drive down the street and see political signs for both affiliations along with the "vote yes" sign is a wonderful statement. And I hope that for all the negativity and the attack ads we see on TV, we have this one beacon of hope in Enfield through the "vote yes" signs. You know, and I hope that, you know, that everyone will see that this is a good project, and it's worth getting behind. My second hat has to do with the election. And it seems to me that the town is really getting inundated with political signs for both parties. And there's got to be a line. I don't know if it's within your power or the registrar's power to somehow scale back, you know, the number of signs that are out there for both parties, the size of the signs. I mean, I love, I love the pictures, you know. I even appreciate the humor in seeing Ken put Joe's picture up. I think it's really funny. But, you know, this seems to me like it could be the beginning of a long tradition of huge pictures, you know, for people we may or may not support. So, you know, just going to throw that out there. Is it possible to maybe regulate the size of these signs or the use of pictures to endorse a candidate? We're endorsing your record, not your face. I don't think it adds anything to the, you know, to your cause to have your picture everywhere. I think it's just enough to say, you know, I'm a good candidate, and I represent your, you know, what you need, I guess, as a candidate. So, anyway, that's all. And once again, I would like to say, please vote yes on November 6th for the referendum. And it's been a pleasure working with these guys, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, John. Public Communications, Wendy.
Good evening. Wendy Osada, 8 Windmill Road in Enfield. I'm going to abbreviate my comments considerably because you've heard from a lot of folks tonight. I am, too, also an active member of the Enfields Future PAC in support of the high school referendum. And I was also a member of the pre-referendum committee. Couple of things I want to mention are just to address some concerns that I've been hearing as I talk to residents and also some of the chatter that's been on Facebook. So, I'd like to address a couple of those concerns for the folks who are listening. One of the questions we get asked is, well, is everybody going to fit? You know, they're thinking of taking the two schools and then consolidating everybody into one school. Is everyone going to fit? As a member of the pre-referendum committee, I can share with everyone that the school was designed to fit approximately 1,700 students. The only year that our enrollment should equal that number is the very first year that the school is planned to be consolidated. Subsequent years after that, enrollment is going to decline, up to the point of, I'm expected to decline about 28% in the first 10 years. Why are we doing this now? People feel like they're being rushed. Why are we taking action on that? You know, we're not on anything official as far as a warning from, you know, the academic community is concerned, but we have been warned that we are not in compliance. My interpretation is that they're watching very carefully what's happening with this referendum. And if we don't end up making the right choice with this referendum, and we start going down a slippery slope, and we do lose accreditation, folks have to understand the diplomas that our graduates receive will not be worth anything or will not be recognized by any next-level learning institutions. Both the high schools are in desperate need of repair now. The current reimbursement rate is very high. We're currently one of the highest reimbursable towns in the state, and that rate is not guaranteed to continue in future years. And also, another fact I don't hear mentioned a lot is that the amount of square footage that we're eligible for reimbursement for from the state, that calculation is partially determined by the number of students that you have. So, as we are going to start declining in enrollment, or it's expected to start declining in enrollment, we're actually not only potentially losing a good reimbursement rate, but we're also losing the number of square feet that we are eligible to be reimbursed for.
Wendy, sorry to interrupt you, but can the audience members please refrain from having conversations in the back? We're hearing two conversations at once, and it's Wendy's turn. Thanks. Sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. Thank you. You know, we have students and teachers that are traveling back and forth between schools now. We have students that aren't eligible to take the courses they want now, and building costs are favorable now. So, you know, there's an awful lot of reasons why now is the time to do this. I can't, I cannot, and I have not heard in all the residents that I've spoken to or all the Facebook chatter that I've seen, I haven't seen nearly the number of cons to doing this than there are pros. If this does get voted down, folks need to understand it won't go away. We are still going to have to address the conditions of the schools, the new graduation requirements. And finally, in closing, I do want to thank the town for offering the two community QA sessions that are coming up. Originally, the dates were incorrect on the town website, and fortunately, that's been corrected, but I'm still seeing some Facebook postings that have the wrong dates on those. So, if we could get a confirmation when you're allowed to respond later on, it's my understanding that the community conversations are tomorrow night, 10:16 at Henry Barnard, and 10:29 at Enfield High School. And the other date that's been thrown around incorrectly a little bit is the 22nd. And the 22nd, it's my understanding that that is actually the meet-the-candidate's night at JFK. So, all applicable and all options for folks to get information on the referendum, but I just want to make sure that people are being directed to the right place on the right evening. Okay? You know, related to that, I am a bit dismayed at the lack of advertising about those community sessions. I was one of the folks who was on the pre-referendum committee that took some heat because there was also those types of sessions offered back this summer, and they weren't announced or communicated in any way until the evening of the event. And, you know, I, like most people, don't have a chance to sit down and read the paper until after I get home from work and maybe after I've had some dinner while I'm having dinner. So, that's too short notice. I asked Dr. Schuman at the Board of Education meeting last week if he could see to it that some notice was published in the J.I. in a timely manner. some notice was published in the J.I. in a timely manner. I've been watching the J.I. I have not seen anything as of today, which now, the event is tomorrow night, so aside from what's posted on the town website and what's been posted on a couple of Facebook postings, which, you know, is not going to reach nearly the number of people that the J.I. distribution would. So, I'd like to ask if there can be something done that, I think it's too late for tomorrow night, but maybe for the future sessions, if we can make sure that those get communicated appropriately, or, you know, let us know if there's a reason why they can't. Otherwise, if that's not going to happen, is there any reason why we, as the PAC, can't post a notice in the paper just saying, "We, as the PAC, encourage the residents of Enfield to attend these sessions and provide the dates and locations and the times"? So, if I can let that know. Well, I just want to, in closing, refer folks to, as other members have said, the enfieldsfuture.com website, and also let us know if anyone would like a lawn sign. Those are free. Or if anyone would be willing to purchase a T-shirt or make a donation, which goes to pay for the signs that are going up around town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Public Communication, anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate the feedback and the comments. We go to Councilman Communications, Councilman Kenzler.
Thank you, Scott. Through Scott to Matt. In Wendy's comments, we had had a discussion earlier in the week about reaching out to Dr. Schuman to see if there was a way for the town to ask the Board of Education to put out something about those two meetings that she referenced. Did you happen to hear back from the Board of Ed as to whether they could send things home, make up flyers, that type of thing?
Didn't get back to me in terms of any of their plans to publicize that, but I know that the date that we set these, as you might remember at the last council meeting, you know, we did put it on our website, sent out a Q- notify, sent out the notices to all the press outlets that we normally do. So, you know, all those have been out there.
Okay. Thank you. Two other things that are happening around town. On the 27th, the Enfield Dog Park is having their spaghetti dinner.
Bless you.
Bless you. It's having their spaghetti dinner at the Moose Lodge on South Road at 6:00 PM, and they asked me to share that with you. That is how they collect donations to pay for the maintenance of the park. Remember that it's a nonprofit citizen organization that runs it. And as the mayor will tell you, and many other folks that enjoy the Dog Park, they put a lot of work into it. Tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for kids under 10. You can obtain tickets by calling the following phone number. If you could put this up on the screen, guys, 860-394-6213.
You've got to give that to them ahead of time.
They're quick. That's 860-394-6213. Call that number for tickets. You should be able to get some at the door at the Moose Lodge for the spaghetti dinner, but it's better to call. Thank you. The second, the second event I wanted to touch on is the Lights, the Lights On After-School Celebration. That is, the ERFC has. The Enfield Foundation for Excellence in Education, this Thursday, the 18th. If you don't know what you're going to have for dinner, and you're sitting around scratching your head figuring it out, please follow my friends over there's lead and join myself and I'm sure a number of other people over at the 99 Restaurant in Enfield. What they're going to do is serve you whatever you want to eat. You pay for it, and 15 percent of the bill is donated to Effy. It's an awesome cause, and you're going to eat anyway, so if you could go out there. Again, that's Thursday, the 18th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Just to bring forward another event on Thursday, we have the ERFC having their Lights On After-School Celebration at the Square. The keynote speaker will be Lieutenant Governor Nancy Wyman. Joe Courtney as a special guest, Senator Kissel, and a few others, I believe Karen Jarmak from the United Way, and Dr. Schuman. And I believe Scott, you're in attendance as well. But, again, this group is there helping support children after school that would otherwise go home to an empty house, and they're encouraging a safe and happy, you know, environment for kids. So, it's really an event worth supporting, and I look forward to the event myself. Another couple of issues. Through our mayor to our town manager, Matt, does public works go out, and especially now, this time of year, in light of what happened last year, last October 29th? Look up to see the widowmakers that are hanging specifically on Middle Road, on Hazard Avenue, and all the other side streets that I've been watching for six to eight months now. Fortunately, haven't come down on any car or person, but at some point, do we take inventory and make, you know, commitments to remove them, or to make sure that they're secure as to not come down on a person? Maybe we could start doing that. And then also, I'd like to find out the status on the defaced sign on Donna Street. It appears to be still defaced and still at 30. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we have Councilman Stokes.
First of all, to the folks that are involved in the Enfields Future PAC, thanks for coming out tonight. Thanks for your work. It's hard for some of us to, we get very tempted to want to do more than we're doing, but we try to answer questions and make sure the public is informed. And I think it'd be a great idea to make sure that everybody is informed, especially for the second meeting, because I've been directing folks on Facebook to go to these meetings, because that's when they're going to get some facts and stuff like that. But I thank you for your work and what you're doing. I got my sign in my yard, as well as the other signs that I have in my yard for the candidates I support under my free speech. And so, I thank you for what you're doing. I wanted to say also, this, for the first time, I took advantage of one of our town's recreation department's trips, and myself and some friends and many other folks I did not know until we got on the bus. Mayor Copeland was with our group that went to New York City to visit the 9/11 Memorial on Saturday, and toured the city a little bit, but the memorial was a very emotional place to be. You know, I don't know anybody directly affected that day, but as you walked around, you can always tell those who did not know somebody and those who did, by the amount of time they stood in front of one name, which was very emotional. But I wanted to compliment our recreation department. I think it was Allison, was her name, Scott?
Yes.
Who was our cruise director, did a wonderful job. We watched the movie National Treasure 1 on the way down, National Treasure 2 on the way back. Our mayor has never seen either one, so he was really in awe of these movies. And, but I got to compliment the folks here that do the trips. It was enjoyable. The bus driver, as we're going in the New York City, not in New York City, I mean, he was giving us point-by-point location, things we never thought about, places we'd never seen, just let us know historicals. And so, I was just very impressed. I want to compliment them. If you could pass it along, Matt, to Recreation Department, that we were impressed, or I was. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Councilman Crowley.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be a little bit bored here tonight. I just want to thank a lot of the young athletes that are participating this month in the Breast Cancer Awareness Month. You see a lot of different teams supporting the pink colors, and it means a lot to the people that are directly affected by this disease. And to show support of, to see young kids that show that support, and parents that support them, it's a great thing. One of the things that we really don't get an opportunity to do, and that is to say thank you to the people that are going to be running from our town in this upcoming election. Dave Alexander, Tim Senard, David Keiner, Joe Bosco, and Karen Jarmak and John Kissel. You guys are putting your lives on hold in running a campaign. We all know what it's all about, but a lot of people in the town don't understand how much it takes out of you, and it takes away from your family. So, I just want to say thank you to all of them. And I'm sure I'm speaking for the entire council. We appreciate what you do, and we know what you're going through. And this may be a couple tough months for you, but it seems like it works out and it's going to get rewarded regardless of whether you win or lose. You meet a lot of very nice people throughout the campaign. So, again, thank you, all six of you, for what you do, and all the other candidates, obviously, that aren't from town, that, you know, participate in this area. The Pumpkin Fest, better known, that's what I call it, the Pumpkin Fest, will be October 20th. I don't want no one to miss it. It's a great event here on the town green. What time, I don't have a start. 4 o'clock it starts. So, if you get a chance, come on down. It's a fun event, and the kids have a great time. They're running all over the green. It's a great night. Cindy touched basically, Councilman Mangini touched basically on it. You guys remember back last October? I've had a lot of people come up to me and say, "Oh, you know, remember I met you a year ago, coming up?" And it was a very tough time for the people of this town. I mean, we went through a whole area. We went through a real tough time. But I'll tell you, it was also a time that Enfield shined, and I was very proud to be a citizen of Enfield. I thought the town employees and the people of Enfield all came together and did a great job. I would like to see that same effort put forth in this election. I'd like to see a 99 percent vote, 100 percent vote from the people of Enfield. It means a lot. We all put time in for it, and the people that are running put time in for it, and we have a very important question on this ballot, and we would like to hear what the people of Enfield have to say. And hopefully, we get the results we want from it, but I think it's important that everyone has an opportunity to vote. They should vote. So, please, if you get that opportunity, November 6th, make sure you do get down and vote. It's very important for all of us, and for all of you. Consolidation was already talked about, the informational centers. If you have any questions, please contact one of us. If you don't know anybody on the PAC, we will direct you in the right area to go to. As Councilman Stokes says, we have, we're supposed to keep a very even keel on this whole thing. We all have our own opinions and how we feel, and I wish the PAC the best of luck in getting your message out there. I've heard a lot of great things already, and I hope we continue to hear great things. You've got a great group of people working on it, and I'm just glad this town of Enfield has you guys to donate your time. Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Pat. Councilman Bosco.
Just a couple of quick things. Thank you, Pat. I appreciate your words, and I'm sure everyone else does. Through the mayor to the town manager, so far, the last three elections I've been at, there's always been a problem for handicap parking over at JFK. I'm wondering if we could just maybe get the signage a little bit better, so the elderly don't have to, and the handicapped don't have to try to park out and try to walk in? You know, maybe some bigger signs? And so, I don't have to call again. Let's see if we can get that little speed bump fixed there, or something there to make sure that everyone knows where it is, and that'll do me.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Okay. First, Pat, Gina, and Wendy. Pat kind of summed it up. There's not too much we can do from up here. Me personally, as a resident of Enfield, I think it's the best thing that could happen for my grandson. My kids, my last daughter's a senior in Fermi, and the science labs and everything are outdated right now. My grandson won't be there for the next 15 years. I can't imagine what they'd be like if this doesn't pass. And taxes go up. We've just seen that with what the state of Connecticut did last year. So, I don't like the taxes going up, but they're going up whether we do the high school or not. Unfortunately, if we don't do it this way, they're going to go up in Enfield pretty hard, because the state is forcing us to make these changes. So, all I would say is, you know, I can't show my support either way, except I would like a sign on my lawn, if you could get over there. And then, about the pictures on the signs, I believe one of the biggest reasons that Joe decided to put the pictures on his sign is so his family can remember what he looks like, because he's here doing this for free. He's out every night doing politics, and as you know, he works full-time in his own business. Okay? He has no other spare time. So, when you drive around and see his picture there, that's a reminder of the man who's out there trying to make a difference for all of us, and I support it. Personally, I don't like seeing his mug on every corner, but you know what? I'll deal with it. He's a good guy, and I wish all the candidates the best luck. It's one of the cleanest elections we've had run, and I wish him the best of luck. I wish all the other candidates the best of luck, and he knows he can put a sign on my front lawn anytime he wants. That's why I brought his picture with me. Then, no, I don't want to show his ugly mug. And then I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move D-E-F-G. What?
Hey, hey, I resemble that picture.
I was interrupted. I have the floor.
Yes, you can.
Motion to suspend the rules and move D-E-F-G and H to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Second. Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Stokes. Discussion? Sensing none, show hands. All those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Items have been moved. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else before me? Okay. Have a couple of items. First of all, to Lynn, to Donna, to Pat, to Gina, John, and Wendy, all coming out and speaking in favor of the referendum. Thank you very much. It's, you're doing yeoman's work out there, and I'm doing my best to try to answer questions in whatever form they come, and it tends to be Facebook. And last night, it was supposed to be a relaxing evening, and I posted something, and I stayed up till about 11:30 answering questions. But we're all in it together. Thank you for the sign on the lawn. And really, just thank you. Everyone knows, this council supports it. We voted to put it on the ballot, so you've got the support of the council. And I'm just hoping that everyone takes the opportunity to look at the information you provide, look at the information that the town will be providing, attend the two sessions, Thursday, Tuesday, October 16th, 7:00 PM at Barnard, and Monday, October 29th, 7:00 PM at Enfield High School. It is meant to be a less intimidating setting, one with a couple tables of the plans, of folks that people can speak to, that people can ask their one-on-one question versus having to get up in front of an auditorium and to ask a question. So, we thought that design was a better design for people to be able to ask specific questions. And it's not on television, so they've moved the camera this way. And so, hopefully, people will come out and do that. So, thank you for your work. There is a second question on the ballot, and Matt, did we get the information up on the website today? So, there is a second referendum question, and that's on the redistricting of the town council districts. And so, please go to the town website, enfield-ct.gov, click on the link for Town Council Redistricting. You're going to give information on it. And look at the maps, look at the numbers. What we tried to do as a council is balance out the four council districts based on population. So, a district council member represents everyone, whether they're a registered voter or not. And we believe we came to a very fair number, a very equal number across all districts. Councilman Crowley mentioned the Jack-o'-lantern festival, 4 to 8 on Saturday, the 20th, and judging begins at 6:30. And so, if you want to participate in the contest itself, make sure that your jack-o'-lantern has been brought and entered well prior to 6:30. And I get the opportunity to judge again this year, where you make a couple dozen people happy and a lot upset that they didn't win. But it, as Pat said, it's great, it's fantastic work that's done by everyone. And adults can participate, because there is actually a, it's just not all the schools. There's a community entry that you can actually participate in as well. October 27th is the Fermi High School Homecoming, and there'll be a parade at 11:30 AM, starting from Oak Street, which is behind Kelly for that. And they proceed Oak Street to School Street to North, to North Maple, and up to the high school. So, come out and watch the parade. And then, the football game begins at 1:00 PM, and Fermi will be playing Hartford Public High School. And my last comment is, one, personal in nature, two very good friends are celebrating their anniversary today, so I just want to wish my two great friends, Earl and Connie Preventure, a very happy anniversary, and many, many more years together of marital bliss. So, congratulations to Connie and to Earl, and I know they either watch it or tape it religiously, so. Hopefully, they're not watching it on their anniversary, but we'll see. Councilman Crowley.
Just a quick clarification. The high school consolidation is question one on the ballot?
Yes, question one.
Just to make sure that people are aware of that. Okay.
Okay. Okay. We will move to the manager's report and communication. Matt?
Good evening. And if you go to our website, which I think our friends in the ETV booth will be putting up on the screen here very shortly, you will see on the front page, if you go down about halfway, under the alerts, there'll be a big red button that says referendum question number two, information. And when you click on that, it will pull up some basic information about, you know, why this was done, how were the boundaries arrived at, the population distribution for each of the districts, as well as different maps that show what the current district layout is, the proposed district layout, and then the areas that are changing. Very good. Unfortunately, I didn't have time beforehand to get this all set up so they could go right to it. But you can see there, if they go in on the iPad by Councilman Kinsler, you can see what it looks like on the front page. We will be adding tomorrow, a referendum question number one button as well, where people will be able to click on that. And will be some of the handouts and information that we'll be giving out at the two Q and A sessions. And as Mayor Copan said, the intent behind these two meetings is really to be a low-key question and answer for the public. There will be a brief overview by the architect, kind of explaining what the renovations and expansion looks like. And then we'll have a number of different areas where we'll have the plans and other information laid out for people to go talk to either members of our staff, members of the school staff, members of the architect's staff. And again, that's Henry Barnard, All Purpose Room, October 16th at 7:00 PM. And then Monday, October 29th, 7:00 PM at the Enfield High School Cafeteria. And I believe we will be filming portions of the presentation to put on ETV as well. You know, we're not at these and from the town's perspective, we can't answer every question, I'll guarantee that, because some of the questions really go into speculation and are not fact. And, you know, the line that we have to operate on from the town staff and the people we pay to be at these meetings is, we can only talk about the facts that we know. And, you know, some of the questions about, well, you know, what is that cost if we do nothing? Well, you know, there aren't any facts on that. I think there's a lot of supposition. And, but, you know, for us as staff to be able to answer that, it's something we can't do because, again, you know, we don't have a study that we can go back to that can say, this is what it costs. But there are a lot of facts out there related to why we have to do something and we can talk about that. So I don't want people to walk away from that saying, well, I didn't get this question answered, like, what's going to happen with Fermi High School? Well, we can't answer that because there's no fact to what that's going to be. But hopefully, you know, we'll be able to give exactly information that are factual-based information on what happens if it's approved. You know, what can people expect to see in terms of the renovations, the expansion, and what the costs are. I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Anyone have any questions on? Go ahead, Tom.
On the number of, on the two different meetings, they're going to be set up exactly the same.
Correct.
I had heard a couple of different numbers out there, two tables. How many? I heard up to six tables or four tables, you know, so residents could walk in and just go right to any particular table.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Ask their questions and they didn't have to go table to table. They would have enough information at each table.
Yeah, and the intent is scalability. If we have 10 people show up, we don't need to have six tables. If we have 50 or 60 people show up, we're going to have multiple areas. So again, we can have small groups.
Okay.
You know, we don't, again, what we're trying to get away from is large groups where people feel uncomfortable asking questions. We want it to be a very casual affair where people, you know, can stay there until all the questions are answered that we can answer without, you know, feeling that, you know, feeling pushed or anything like that.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilman Lee? As part of these meetings, do you have a PowerPoint that's going to be delivered or a set of details or bullets that are going to be shared with everybody?
Yeah, and that's what we have laid out at some of the different stations.
Do you or a member of the team have an opportunity to get with ETV before the meeting and do a quiet one-on-one about some of the basics of the initiative that can be shown on the channel between now and the referendum?
We're talking about that.
Okay. That'd be great. Thanks.
Any further questions for Matt on either referendum questions? Pat?
Not on the referendum question, but on the informational center. Are they going to be taped by ETV tomorrow night and then replayed?
I'm not sure if, I would think it's tomorrow night, but I'm not sure about that. It's either going to be tomorrow night or on the 29th.
And then be replayed?
We'll have that, yeah. And it'll be constantly replayed. But what, you know, Bill was talking about, maybe something different that might be happening before that, so.
Good. All right. Great.
Anyone else?
Really quick looking over, related to Donna, the request has gone in to traffic safety to do the study on the speed limit. So they are requesting that we want to have the equipment installed to do the traffic counts as well as the speed. I'll talk with DPW tomorrow to make sure that the sign is replaced. It's just that one sign. Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. And also talk with DPW about widowmakers, but I just, you know, want to make sure that, you know, what some people may think is a widowmaker may actually be a branch that's attached that we wouldn't be taking care of. But if it's one that's detached that could fall, we would be taken care of, so. Yep. Yep. That's it.
That's it? Okay. Any other questions for Matt? Sensing none, town attorneys report and communication. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing particularly popping right now. I would, just wanted to comment briefly on the question that came up with the regulation of political signs going forward. Just, it is really at the core of the First Amendment rights of free speech and the United States Supreme Court has always been particularly solicitous of individuals who want to express their political views on their own property or on private property. It has extremely limited the ability of any municipality or any government agency to take action in that area and would greatly caution jumping into that deep end of the pool unless there was a real driving reason to do so on that, so. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Any questions for Kevin?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we will go to reports of special committees of the council. Any reports of special committees of the council? Councilman Lee?
Just to note that Economic and Development Services is going to be meeting as a subcommittee on the 24th at 4:00 PM and working with staff to develop the agenda and we'll have it out the next day or so. Thank you.
Anyone else? We move to old business. Appointments remain on the table, both council and manager, correct? Items C, D, and E remain on the table. New business, there is no new business on the agenda, so we move to items for discussion. We have an appointment on the Ethics Commission for a full-time member. It's beginning November 1st, 2012. So if anyone's interested in the Ethics Commission, please put in an application. And then we move to item I, discussion request to purchase REX. Matt?
Yes, and it's not recreation for other bus trips. Not what we're talking about here. They are renewable energy certificates or credits. And one of the goals of the Clean Energy Committee is to get the town of Enfield qualified for a 2-kilowatt solar rotating system. And one of the methods to get there would be the town purchasing REX, those renewable energy credits or certificates, to supplement our purchase of clean power that we currently are doing. The Clean Energy Committee has estimated that the purchase would be in the neighborhood of $3,000. And if you go to the Clean Energy Fund's website, do a couple clicks, you would find the different companies that we could purchase these from directly, or we could purchase directly from different companies that have already passed state bids. Or we could do our own solicitation like some other communities have done. You know, I think the details in whether we go directly to what's on there or we do our own initiative bid, I think is, some detail will work out. But what we want to make sure is that council is okay with us going forward and making that approximate purchase of about $3,000 worth of these renewable energy certificates.
And this is something that was passed in a resolution by the council either last term?
Well, actually, yeah, back, I want to say it was right around 2008, 2007, as part of the creation of the Clean Energy Committee, the town at that point committed to a purchase goal of clean energy from Clean Energy Resources. We're not there as of yet. And actually, any type of supplemental purchase right now of this will not put us at that ultimate goal that council adopted back in 2007, 2008. But what it would do would be, you know, meeting an interim goal that would then qualify us for those benefits from the Clean Energy Fund.
Right. Okay. Any questions? Any comments? Deputy Mayor Nelson?
How much would a 2-kilowatt system cost if you bought one?
Just looking at other communities that have, you know, either qualified for us, they're talking in the $20,000, $30,000 range.
Uh-huh. Now, 2 kilowatts. Most people have a 5,000-watt generator at their house. That's what they used the last storm. 2 kilowatts is four times the size of that?
What, again, other websites that I looked at for this kind of, you know, put that at about the energy production for, or energy necessary to power up two residential houses.
Okay. I'm just trying to let the people know. I know what a gigawatt is from Back to the Future, but when you get into kilowatts.
Right. I mean, it's compared to what our usages are in our town facilities. And I think Clean Energy's committee has the idea of integrating this in with the school system to create some programs with the schools. And so I think that's what they're looking at if we should get this to install it at one of the schools. It's not going to offset a lot of the consumption, but it is a start. And I think, again, it's something that we're very close to qualifying for right now. The $3,000 is something that, you know, we can find within the energy purchasing that we do on a yearly basis. So it's not going to be a detriment in terms of, you know, a burden to the overall budget to do this. And again, it helps us achieve a goal that council laid out as part of the Clean Energy Committee way back when, so.
So $3,000 plus the hard work of the Clean Energy Committee gets us a $20,000 system.
Yep.
I think it's a great job on their part. I want to thank them and I support it. Thank you.
Councilman Kinsler?
Yeah, I definitely support it. And as a liaison to the committee, you know, little things like this add up and two houses' worth of electricity is, you know, a third or half a town hall in terms of energy consumption. But, and interestingly enough, there was an article today about the Z-Rex facing a bump in the road and that several towns, it looks like, other towns, not Enfield, that have put forth hasty bids to qualify for these types of programs in the past, are finding now that they aren't doing them. And they're going to be coming around with another round of available, looks like, opportunities. We may want to jump on those as well to continue down the path of getting $20,000 systems for a very, you know, minimal amount of investment. And for Deputy Mayor Nelson, this won't need coffee grounds or banana peels to run this one. This will just run on sunlight.
What do we do with the DeLorean?
Further questions? Comments? We're seeking consensus from the council, so based on the comments and the nods of heads, there's consensus to move forward. And to Jeff and to Ray and to everyone with Clean Energy, thank you very much for your work, so. Okay. So that completes items for discussion and we move to miscellaneous. And the first item under miscellaneous is discussion resolution, request for transfer funds for Department of Public Works truck replacement, $172,000. Resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from General Fund, $172,000, to transfer to CIP, $172,000. From General Fund Transfer Inn, $172,000, to CIP DPW Truck Replacement, $172,000. Certified the funds are available. Lynn Nenney, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second. By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Nelson. Discussion? Any discussion? Sensing none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Copan?
No, I was going for my microphone. Okay. Sorry.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item is discussion resolution, request for transfer of funds for school readiness, $100,000. Resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Child Development Center, salaries certified, $39,826. Salaries non-certified, $40,018. Social Security, $2,0481. Medicare, $580. Health medical insurance, $16,747. Parent activities, $500. From school readiness revenue, school readiness grant, $100,152. Certified the funds are available. Lynn Nenney, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Kinsler, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion? Any discussion? Sensing none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, request for transfer of funds for youth services professional development, $1,200. Resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to youth services professional development, $470. Travel, $700. Food, $30. From youth services revenue, Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services Scholarship Award, $1,200. Certified the funds are available. Lynn Nenney, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Discussion? Sensing none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Copan?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, request for transfer of funds for Department of Transportation Fixed Route Bus Service, $661,025.
Second.
Oh, thank you. So there's a motion to waive the reading by Councilman Bosco, right? No, sorry, Councilman Lee, seconded by Councilman Mangini. I was surprised that Bosco would make that motion. So is there a, all right, all those in favor of waiving the reading, by a show of hands? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Those opposed? One in opposition. So the way, the motion passes is a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Kinsler, to approve the transfer of funds for the fixed bus route. It's two dial-a-ride from the revenue from DOT. Any discussion?
There was a question that was forwarded us regarding the ability to sell advertisement on the bus, and Pam Brown, who is here, if she wants to come up, if you have any questions, in checking with that, she found that there wasn't any reason why we couldn't sell advertising on that. In fact, she's been working to put together a plan for that.
Okay. Councilman Lee?
Yeah, I was just going to say, move to waive the reading because there's 30 different lines here that are really just nickels, applying the nickels and dimes from the grant. It's really a one-sentence... A one-sentence resolution, just applying the funds that we've received.
Further discussion? Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Any change to this bus route? Will have to come in front of the council?
That is exactly the promise that we made to you.
Okay.
I mean, if it's... Well, let me clarify that. If it's moving, you know, one street over, it probably won't, but if it's, you know, taking this a whole different direction, and I'm very sensitive to what, you know, council's beliefs are, you know, definitely that, you know, any major alteration to that would be coming to you.
Okay, thank you.
And I just know that, you know, there's probably going to be some minor alterations to it, but anything major that takes us away from what we're doing right now definitely will be coming to council.
Councilman Kinsler?
Yeah, just to second the sentiment, the one street moving or an adjustment, you know, that one block or anything isn't a problem, but we want to make sure that the residents have a fixed route, that right now, a lot of people put a lot of work into figuring out what that route's going to be that serves the citizens best, and we don't want to lose control of that.
Correct.
Down the road. So you're assuring us that that's the case?
You got it.
I'm good.
Thanks, Tom. Councilman Bosco?
I'd just like to know one thing. When the state funding runs out, the key gets shut off, correct? Or it has to come down to council to get more funding?
Well, as any budget that is put forth, council ultimately has the final direction on what happens with it. And, you know, right now, what we're able to do with the state funding is provide, you know, all the service that we've promised at the price that the state has given to us for that, and I believe we have the commitment for next year, and I'm not sure if we have beyond the following year. Three years, that's it. So we have three-year commitment by the state to fund this fully.
Okay. It's fully funded for three years, so for three years, we don't have to worry about it.
Correct.
Any further questions, comments? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Next item, discussion resolution, authorizing the town manager to enter into agreement with the Connecticut State Department of Education. Resolved that the town manager, Matthew W. Copley, is authorized to enter into and amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of the town of Enfield with the Connecticut State Department of Education for the Quality Enhancement Grant Program, School Readiness Municipalities, July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2013, and to affix the corporate seal.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Stokes. Welcome, Pam. I know there was a couple of questions that you did answer in your emails, but why don't we just have you reiterate your answers to us?
I'd be happy to. Good evening. The Quality Enhancement School Readiness for Municipalities grant will provide up to $4,000 to qualified communities to provide scholarship reimbursement for early care education providers who are currently working in Enfield. Kite will be sending out applications and listing what the qualifications would be, the courses need to be, courses that people in early care and education that would help people to get qualified for NIAC accreditation or school readiness accreditation. And it's a small pot of money. The money will be divided equally among all of the qualified applicants. It's the only fairest way that we could think of.
Right.
Distribute the money.
Okay. Questions? Councilman Stokes?
Just clarification. First of all, I like the idea, because we talked years ago when I was a member of Kite, of having some way to try to get those that are involved in, you know, home daycares and private daycares to get accredited, to build up their skills and stuff like that. Just my only question is, is I know that you're going to, for those that are qualifying the applications that come in, you're going to spread out the money to them equally that are qualified. Is every daycare child provider in the town that's licensed, are they getting in the application so they can try to get this? How is that being done?
We're going to send it out through Kite, and then we'll also hand, you know, mail them out to the list that's...
Not just those that are a member of Kite?
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure that, because I know there's a group of wonderful daycare providers that are on the Kite Committee, but there's many others who don't participate in the committee. I just want to make sure everybody's treated equally, so, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Any further comments? Sensing none, Pam, thank you, roll call.
Mayor Copeland?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Lee?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Councilman Arnoni?
Four.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Four.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thanks, Pam.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. This completes miscellaneous. Next item on the agenda is public communications. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Sensing none, we move to councilman communications. Any councilman communications? I have one item, just because I failed to mention it earlier. I received a packet of photographs from Rich Tangway, and he took photos of the fireworks display during the Fourth of July celebration, but from the vantage point of in front of town hall, and he has an array of large photos, that he's willing for the town to select one, and he will mat and frame it for town hall. So I just want to publicly thank Rich. The pictures are beautiful. There's one that he got, he got the explosion of the firework at the point of the top of the American flag.
Oh, wow.
So from the flagpole, you see the firework exploding with the American flag in front, and then town hall is the front view. So you see town hall, the flag, and the firework. They're absolutely great pictures, but just thanks to Rich, he goes around and takes photographs of all events, and he passed around this packet, so... How do we want to see it? I'm going to give the photos over to Matt, and there's about... And if we want more and frame them ourselves at our cost, we can, but I think there's four or five large photos, probably along the size of that shadow box with the flag that he printed up at his expense, and he'll mat and frame one. So if we want to do more, we can. And I'm sure he said if we needed the negatives, if we wanted to incorporate it into anything that the town does recognition-wise to give out to folks, that we could have the negatives as well. But just wanted to give a public thanks to Rich and for all the work that he does across the community, and we'll get working on that. And once we're ready, we'll have Rich here, and he can present it to the town.
Cool.
Thanks, Rich.